You don't pay attention, but I don't remember.
Every single item on the agenda is consent.
At all, but I have to tell you, I loved, I loved the agenda.
Oh, no.
Oh, but.
Are you ready?
We're set.
Okay. My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the daytime and place thereof sent to the record, town news, and/or Star-Lager newspapers, the constituent borough clerks and borough libraries, as well as posting in the school districts' principals' offices, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoke of tobacco is strictly prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere in school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, gressi areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to fine not to exceed $100. Roll call. Roger. Stephanie?
Here.
Patty?
Here.
Claudia?
Here.
Paul? He's here. Todd?
Here.
Todd?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Vito?
Here.
And Joe?
Here.
We have the ladies. Allison?
Here.
You both answered?
Yeah.
Allison?
I'm here.
And Bridget?
Here.
Mrs. Omburg, since you have something in. I'm sor-
That's me.
I just was, but I, I-
There's no way she can do that.
All right. Sorry. Thank you, Patty.
The mission of Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his/her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content standards.
Thank you. At this point, if there's any comp- excuse me, public comments on the agenda items only? Mr. Renshaw, glad to have you back. Miss J. Seeing as there are no comments on the public, from the public on the agenda items, we'll move right along to our student member report.
All right. Sure, I don't know what to say.
Okay, I'll just say the gold award.
Okay.
So, the biggest thing on our minds right now is AP tests, which are generally only for juniors and seniors, so the freshmen and sophomores got off lucky. But a lot of us are taking tests, I believe, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and upcoming Monday.
And Tuesday.
Yeah.
And Wednesday.
Yeah, lots of things. And some of them are in the morning, some are in the afternoon, but like two hours each, and everyone's in a big frenzy. Today was the 2000, the class of 2012, class barbecue, like where will you be next year? That's why me and Allison are wearing our college t-shirts.
Yeah.
Because all the seniors wore their college t-shirts, then we took a picture, so that like, I don't know, you can look back and see where everyone will be in case you're wondering.
Bless him.
Another thing on our mind, senior service starts as soon as AP tests are finished, where people perform volunteer service either in the community or at Riverdale itself. For example, I will be performing research with Mrs. Jacoba's committee teacher, and we're also trying to arrange volunteer service at the middle schools and the grade schools in order to, you know, reach out. Another big thing is the New Jersey Chemistry Olympics Event Day, where we go and present our research papers and molecules and lab events is May 17th, which is coming up, exciting. The Redalian, the school newspaper, will have a new issue coming out in early June. It will, the biggest thing about it, it's like the senior feature issue, so we're gonna have all the colleges.
It's the one issue that you can never get your hands on.
Because everyone wants to see where everyone is going, and there's gonna be like a valedictorian salutatorian feature, which is cool. And I'm gonna let Allison.
Okay, well, you know, AP tests are on my mind, too. I know that the AP art and AP photo classes just submitted their portfolios, which was exciting. A lot of them are done. I unfortunately am taking three more tests, so yay. What else? Senior service again. I'm gonna be down at the middle school with Madame G, teaching the French classes, so I'm excited about that. The spring concert for the band and the chorus is going to be May 24th. The French and Spanish National Honor Societies will be inducting their new members on May 31st. And we have some cool, like, some people sing in French, some people will show their Spanish projects. It's always kind of interesting. We try and make it multimedia-ish. In the, in the sports world, baseball has a 13-to-4 record, which is quite impressive. And Boys and Girls Track will host the Big North Conference Patriot and American Division Championships this Friday, May 11th, so it'll be on the track. What else was I gonna say? Oh, my thanks to Mr. Manzelli and Mr. Fletcher for coming to my gold award ceremony. That was very nice to see you guys at another formal meeting, but a different formal meeting. And the Oradel Troop, Troop 1194, will be having their gold award ceremony on May 21st. And Kayleen Marulis and Taylor Carden both got their gold awards. I know Taylor's just waiting for final word from council, but Kayleen is set, so it's exciting. We've got five girls in our grade getting their gold awards, and I think someone said at the meeting that at my ceremony, that only 9% of all eligible Girl Scouts get their gold awards, so we have a good representation of that at our school. And, oh, we have more. The freshman formal will be on the 18th. The sophomore social was last Thursday. The freshmen are gonna have a great time, the sophomores had a great time. And we have senior prom on June 14th, and we're all very excited about that. We're absolutely paying for our hotels.
Tickets, yes, and tickets are going on sale, $150.
Yay, spending money. Yeah, and this is our last meeting, because, yeah, I know, you're gonna miss it. The, the new rising seniors will be Marissa and Nikki, and they'll, they'll be here for your next meeting.
They'll be here next week.
Yeah.
And we'd just like to thank you all for being such an excellent board, because I, I don't know about Allison, I think Allison, too, but I've learned a lot about how the board works and what goes on, and how much discussion goes through for these things that we just get thrown on our plate, like, you know, like opportunities. It's very, it's very interesting.
Yeah, it was a good experience. So, thank you for inviting us and listening to us every, every other week, or however often we have these.
Yeah.
Thank you. And that brings us to the president's report, and I really don't have a whole lot other than, as I say, there's a lot of events coming up. You guys mentioned a few of them. I do know the senior awards, because Vito would ask me, too, is it June 7th? With a lot of the scholar, it's become, commonly called now money night, when all the scholarship stuff comes out from the local, you know, organizations out there.
Shakedown.
Oh, shakedown. No, it's, it's actually a great night, a lot of, a lot of different money value scholarships are given out and all, too. And again, it's nice to see the community does give back to the students. And the only other thing I wanted to report, it was actually very nice, I was glad to be invited to the event, it was really nice to see. And like you said, just knowing that such a small number of Girl Scouts actually make it to that, that spot, you know, the golden award, it was, it's just kinda neat to know that there's, like you said, what, five now? Five in the school? And that's, it's only 9% making it in the country, that's pretty amazing that five in the school have. And I know I did not attend it, I know Mr. Fletcher did, was the, the Boy Scouts also had two or three?
Two or, two, so far.
Two. That they made it to the highest award for Boy Scouts.
Eagle Scout.
Eagle Scouts, well. You have the highest award for Boy Scouts, no?
Right.
Okay, Eagles. So, that's really it, other than looking forward to finishing out the year and hoping everybody does well on their tests. Thank you.
I have four items to bring to your attention. I'll bring the most boring one first, and that is that Riverdale will be undergoing a CUSAC examination on Friday, May 11th, that's this Friday. The county office called us last week and asked us if we could reschedule from the end of June to Friday, and we all said yes, so they will be here on Friday to do their review. This is the onsite review, they've already come and done the physical inspection with, or the facilities inspection.
Does it require a lot more quick stuff that's gotta get ready for them for Friday? Or is-
Or are you guys just ready, which is why?
Essentially, if there was a few minor things that needed to be relooked at.
Yep.
They, they'll take a look at those.
Okay.
Paper chase on a few things. And this is really the second part of CUSAC. Don't anticipate anything being-
So, there's really not too much to prepare for?
No, there's a lot to prepare for.
Okay.
But I can't see it being out of one.
We did a bulk, we did the bulk of the preparation by January 9th, if you recall, when the board approved the submission of the statement of assurance and the district performance review documents. So, now what it is, is just making sure that what we said we did is really there.
Yeah, we were anticipating them coming in January, and they told us no. So, a lot of our work was completed, and now we've just gotta prepare it again for Friday.
So, the county office will be here doing the inspection. I was notified today that Kira Cohen, who is one of the freshmen here at the high school, is a winner in the Young Playwrights Festival that took place over the weekend, and her play will be performed at the Seccone Theater at Bergen Community College on June 7th at 8:00 p.m., which unfortunately is the same night as senior awards, but that's when it'll be. And just as an aside, this is the same award that our own Joe Di Pietro, who was one of the Riverdale Distinguished Graduate Awards won, and he had mentioned this at the dinner for the distinguished graduates, which was a month or two back. I just wanted, I head forward it to the board, the fact that Riverdale will be hosting May 23rd, Microsoft, Intel, and Cisco, I think it is, it's a half-day program that will be held here, talking about the integration of technology into the learning environment. I'd also like to point out to you that in this month's edition of Tech and Learning, we are featured, and this is Mary Anthony Williams featured. She did a presentation for the Tech and Learning Group down at, in Washington DC, a week or so back. The board had approved that travel before. And finally, this is the latest edition of Sports Illustrated Golf Magazine, and in it is an article that was conceived because Phil Mickelson, who is pro golfer, was selected into the Golf Hall of Fame, and they were looking at four or five individuals who were touched by Phil, and one of them is our own David Finn, who is right here.
Oh, there you go.
I'll pass this around for everybody. It's our own David Finn, and he has a featured article on the next page, which you can all take a look at, because of his involvement with, with Phil Mickelson. Even though we are mentioned very briefly in here, a lot of the interview was took place here, because the student, David came back here with his parents and, and the author of the article, and they spent a day going around Riverdale checking it all out, even though David has, has moved on to, he's actually at Bergen Community College, which is a wonderful place.
And very photogenic.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Brings us to committee reports, budget and finance? Nothing to report. Campus facilities?
We will meet next Monday, and we have set the schedule through the end of the year, which I will send everyone.
We are confirmed for before, right? Is that what the, before the meeting?
Yes, only next Monday.
Right, right, okay.
Then we'll be meeting on Tuesdays, and Michael will be to somehow try to attend.
Okay. Community relations? No report. Personnel, we have nothing to report right now.
That would include the negotiation with Tom?
Well, that's, that's a separate issue.
Okay.
It's an executive.
Executive right now. It just, we have some contracts we're going through, but not, can't speak about them in public as of yet. Policy and governance?
We have not met, but I believe, are we good for May 15th at 7 o'clock?
Seven.
I think. I guess Roger's not here for technology, but I don't believe there was any meeting, so. Curriculum try district?
Curriculum has not met since our last meeting, but tried, nor has tried district, but we have a meeting tomorrow night at 7 o'clock.
Okay, with that, then, moving right along to our agenda, which is a, looks like it's all a consent agenda, consent agenda. Have a motion on the consent agenda items. Stephanie? Seconded by Claudia. Discussion on any items? Anybody have any discussion on any of these consent agenda items? Okay, Tom, roll call on the consent agenda items. Stephanie?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
And Joe? Yes. Sorry, I just. Um, that actually brings us to item number 11. Are there any items for board discussion and decision? Michael?
Town hall. We voted on a town hall meeting in connection with a regular board meeting that we think might be short or might be complimentary to it.
Time for them tonight.
And, you know.
I'm sorry, I mean, yeah, this is-
Love it, he's always good. Question is, can we bring it to some more of a definitive goal as to maybe the month we would have the town hall, hopefully not in, during the summer months, but.
I'm just, you know what, I'm just looking to see what the, the schedule is again, because I don't remember.
It's May 14, June 7, and-
And June 4th and June 18th.
June 4th, right, I'm sorry, and June 18th.
Patrick might know which one would be less booked, or do you have any feel for that?
Four.
June 4?
Yeah, I would think.
Sounds good.
Off the top of my head, yeah.
I would think it would be just the 18th to be built, because right before graduation.
Hopefully, we'll have some higher ones.
But.
Oh.
Oh.
No, no, we're good.
I thought he was-
Is it going around yet, sorry?
Oh, no, no.
Well, with, with that, then, I'll tell you, say the town hall, I'd like to kinda discuss the parameters, and what we, what we intend to accomplish that, in that meeting. You know, do we, do we want a third party coming in to try to, I don't wanna say mediate, that sounds like it's too, you know, I don't know.
I don't think we need a, a third party to come in and-
I'm just, I'm throwing out, asking people.
No, I'm just responding to your, your thing, is, I mean, I think the, the focus in my mind was the fact that here, we would actually have a, more of a two-way communication street between whoever shows up and the board versus the environment of a regular board meeting, which is a little more restricted to a question-answer type of thing. And to see whether or not there's any interest in public.
Just kinda keep it as, as an open thing, then.
So, if somebody says, "I have a real issue with this teacher so-and-so," blah, 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 blah.
We can't talk about that.
Okay, so, so that's what I'm, I'm like, so, I mean, so, I'm saying, so what I'm saying is, what's your, what's then the response to that question?
Well, unfortunately, would have to be, is like, if anybody talked about any kind of, like, in the public comment section, where somebody says, "You don't like, I'm sorry, Vito's a so-and-so, he's the worst teacher," kinda thing, you know, we cannot, we can't discuss that, and the answer to that would be, "I'm sorry, we cannot discuss that in public." You know, you'd have to talk to the building principal and on up, type of, type of thing. It may not be what people wanna hear, but that is, that is something we can't legally, as, as a board, talk about, personnel matters unless we're voting on a, an item, an agenda item.
I guess my question is, what is the kind of question that's going to be posed that we're gonna be able to answer, and then who's answering?
Well, it, it-
I'm, I'm curious.
Hey, look, does my child need to take calculus to go to, to go to college? Or my son or daughter is in this class now, is he gonna be able to take calculus? Or I'm concerned that the school isn't offering a class in ceramics, or something like that. I don't know what questions are out there. One of the things is, to see what questions we got. We had a survey, but that, we were asking the parents' questions, and we, at that time, didn't have an open-ended question. So, part of the town hall, town hall environment in my mind is to allow the student, the parents, or students if they showed up, to go ahead and ask open-ended questions or give us open-ended information.
Okay, so, so again, my question, so they ask you, "If my kid is, starts out in freshman algebra, you know, how, you know, how or when can he get to AP calculus? Who's answering that?"
Whoever, Patrick, I would think would be the first person to start with that.
And I think Patrick can address the person to where to get that answer, best guidance counselor.
But, which-
So, so, I'm just saying, that's, but then that's a meeting with Patrick.
I understand, I was actually gonna say, 'cause that's actually, one of, some of the things that I guess people should know, and I guess what I would like to try to do is make a point of that, at that, at that particular town hall meeting, is there are numerous, you know, coffees with the superintendent, where a lot of that stuff could be asked as well, and I don't know, it might be easier to ask those, some of those questions in a more intimate than, than the school board, and on RDTV and all, too, but I guess we won't know, we'll find out, but that's what I intend to-
I just wanna encourage people to come, and then feel very slighted by the fact that we, that we have parameters on what we can answer, and that, that they can't necessarily just ask one of us a question, that we have to answer it as a board.
I think it's important for us to be able to tell them who and what they should do to find out that answer, rather than, we can't always give an answer as the board.
Correct, and I think maybe, maybe it's an education of the public.
But there's procedures that they should be following, I mean, we're gonna hear their complaint, or what their worries are, whatever that might be, which is great, 'cause we, we should hear that. But again, I think that they then need to know what the procedure is and who they need to talk to.
But, but the procedure should be more than the normal one, which is, you, they provide us with their problem or question, and then it goes into, "We'll get back to you," to the extent that we can respond. And Stephanie, to address you on, on the piece of response, if they say that we should have more advanced courses, all right? Me, as a member, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just speaking here, I can say, "Yeah, I think maybe we should have some more." I can engage in a conversation, not only with them, but with other board members. We rarely do that beyond the agenda items, and, you know, new business and old business. So, in my mind, this is supposed to be more of an open interchange of, see what's out there. And if it turns out we have our favorite person there, we know what the scope of questions will be, it'd be very easy, and he already knows that he can't ask about particular teachers and problems that they have.
But I disagree that in this format, you can answer it that way.
Well, we disagree, we agree with you very much.
I, I don't think that's the format.
Only time we could not address somebody individually, would be outside of this realm. So, in other words, we have board policy that says the board president speaks, or designate someone to speak to the media, we know that if someone comes up to us, we have to tell them to go back and use proper channels, or whatever the situation may be, but here-
Well, you can't take action on their behalf, you can certainly engage in a conversation.
But that's all we're talking about. So, why wouldn't we wanna do that? That's the place where we can do it, is right here in this forum, so.
I want people to get the, the impression that, that any individual member is speaking as an action of the board, that's all, that's, that's what I'm saying.
And we would, we would make that, I would, Joe would probably take, take that position in the beginning and say is that, even though we're talking about it, it takes a vote of the whole board to make up a position for the board, and that the members here are speaking on their own behalf, and also you can't ask questions about teacher performance because they have certain rights.
About this, or that, or that, or that.
All right, and then with that setup, see if there are, is anything, this is a test. We voted for it, and what I'd like to, I'm sorry, can I change the subject a little? And ask, no.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Patrick, can you get the word out on that for us? Yes. Like a blast or something, or something that, I, I know blast, blast blows up a lot of ideas, but I mean, something that would try and get the word out as many possible, and see if they're interested. And by the way, thank you, Patrick, for arranging that the middle school had a, on their announcement board, had the Board of Ed's meeting today and next week, and, wait a minute, we have two people?
Yep.
We've doubled, we've doubled.
Cause and effect might be a little issue there.
Mr. Renshaw is an honorary member of the board.
Oh.
They probably have a paper or something, yeah.
Should we have Todd?
Yeah, two quick issues. I know that the surveys were issued, we got a compilation, it's been posted on the website, and I know it's gone back to committee to look at this, but I'd like to see, is there a possible time when we could schedule a discussion, a public discussion of where this is going to the next level, and maybe get some feedback? We could add it to the town hall if you think people have concerns about the survey, but I'd like to just schedule a time to discuss the survey and what's going to happen next. Would that be okay?
Isn't that what the committee has to do first?
Well, can we bring it to the full board before the end of the school year, maybe? Can we just kinda peg a time for it or something?
We're meeting in about a week, so I don't-
Well, I mean, I don't mean the board year, I mean the actual school year, the, by the end of June or something? Any problems?
Well, we'll, we'll discuss it at our next meeting, which is a week, and then we'll get back to it the next-
May 18.
May 18.
Okay.
Sixteen or seventeen.
And- Okay, I look forward to that, 'cause I think I've, I've asked before, and you guys were gonna meet, and I just hadn't heard back.
We haven't met.
Okay. The second thing, I want to bring something off of Vito's laundry list, something that I brought up before, and I'd like to just get some discussion amongst the board, and also maybe eventually, depending on how the board feels about this, get a recommendation from the superintendent, but I would like to consider whether or not we offer summer programs here at Riverdale, at the high school, maybe at the middle school, either for enrichment or to get ahead, you know, maybe this whole idea of, you know, students who wanna get to calculus, who need to make up a course in order to get there by senior year. Some schools have summer programs, some don't. I'd like to know if it'd be feasible. I now know the legislation has changed, and students who partake of such will be responsible for the fees involved in, in that program, but there's a lot of different things we could do. there's a lot of different things we could do, um, you know, some could just be surely enrichment, you know, maybe somebody wants to work on their art skills, or something like that, others could be actual classes, uh, to help them get ahead, or maybe remediate a problem. But, we have these beautiful facilities, um, I'd like to see them used a little bit more in the summertime, and I'd like to see our students use the opportunity to maybe try something new, something different, uh, something outside of their traditional interests, and I know a lot of students talk about going to other programs and other places, and maybe it'd be good to, to have it here, and if we had spots, we could open it up to surrounding communities, or something like that, so, how does everyone feel about this? Is this something we'd like to ask the superintendent to look into, and kind of give us the feel back of what it might cost, or what it might take to run such programs?
Well, there's a few considerations, even before you get into your discussion, if that's what you want to do, okay, but the one time of the year which high school isn't used, is the summertime, and just keep in the back of your mind, that's the one time that we do clean the entire facility, so, not only does it get a rest, per se, okay? It's the time of the year where we do clean it from head to toe, so keep that in consideration, please, as you discuss this further.
Is the middle school also under those same concerns, Tom?
Yep.
What a shame, because we've got these beautiful labs, and maybe some kids might do research in, and we've got all these great facilities, we've got air conditioning, I'd like to consider maybe we could set up a wing or something.
Tom? Do we offer, because last minute you mentioned that we rent out some of our space to, you know, parties. During the summer, do we rent out any space?
No, we don't.
We don't, okay.
Just clubs, right, and, and sports.
Exterior, we might, okay, but has.
No, I mean, you don't do any classrooms, there's no.
There's no.
Could, could there be a way, though, Tom, like, if we wanted to set aside a two, three-week window where we had a particular wing, and we're doing maintenance, saying another wing, or something like that, is it feasible, I mean?
Can we work on something like that, yes, could that be something that the board would have to take into consideration?
I'm just kind of curious, I, I hear of a lot of students looking for things in the summer, going else places, and trying other things. I know sometimes kids are looking to get ahead with coursework, um, you know, maybe we can discuss it more at the town hall meeting, but how does everyone feel about this, any comments?
Again, educationally, I'll talk about the summer school, in twenty-six or twenty-eight days of any class, as far as trying to skip a level in any subject matter, there's no way a teacher can teach in that amount of time what a teacher teaches in a hundred and eighty days of classroom instruction, so they may feel the student now has, and has a passing class to go into the next, but they, they're going to have a lot of gaps in that next level class, because you, you just can't teach in twenty-six days.
And you do it well.
There's not, a paramus is one of those, but again, being a teacher, when I get those students back that have skipped a class, they have huge gaps from being taught a whole year of a subject versus twenty-six days.
But, Paul, what, what about the one semester courses?
Again, I don't, I don't teach the one semester classes, I'm just saying.
In your mind, I mean, because that's.
But, because then it would be half the time, I don't know, I don't know, I can't answer that question.
But there are times when it does work, and I've seen at the county schools, they offer a lot of summer math classes to do that, to catch up. These kids are doing very, very well on their AP exams, so I, I, I think there are pros and cons.
Catch up, or for jumping ahead?
Jumping ahead, and, um, I've seen both situations, I know people go to a variety of areas to do this. I, I think it might be personal preference somewhat, and I'd just like to know if we have enough students to field this.
Joey.
Yeah.
Um, I think that, one, we need to get a pulse of the community before we even try and, like, even orchestrate what's going on, because I know there are a lot of people, you know, you come here all ten months, and although there are kids who like to do it, there, sometimes they go other places, because they, they like to be out of, out of this kind of environment, they're here all the time, and they want to experience something new, that, that's some reason. I also, you know, we've talked about in, um, some of the committees, how, um, study hall is utilized by some kids during the year. Sometimes their course load is heavy, sometimes they didn't find a class that they liked, I would, you know, before having kids come in the summer, I'd love for them to utilize their school year, maybe more effectively, and in, in doing things, we've talked about edgeseer, edgeseer's a great resource for our kids, um, if parents are maybe willing to foot the cost in the summer, maybe they'd be willing to foot the cost during school year, for a kid to take something that we don't really offer, that they might have then looked at for the summer. So, it's just, I think there's other nuances, and we'd really have to, like, engage the public in, in something like this, before we even utilize a lot of our time to set it up, that's my.
Let's engage them.
Now, we think it actually, my opinion is, it's, it's May seventh, it'd be pretty tough to do something this summer, but that's all I'm saying, is it just, it'd be tough, it'd be something to consider.
Take a whole year to plan this, to survey, to, to assess what the policy is.
But I agree with what Stephanie says, we have to find out what the, you know, you could, you know, even though they, you say you can build it, they'll come, well, that doesn't always necessarily happen, so we'd have to find out.
And, and then there's another aspect to it, I think there are one or two courses that are prerequisites for some advanced courses, that sometimes students, from scheduling problems, or because they didn't realize they had to do it, or just decide later on they want to do it, that they need to take an extra course or two, in math or something, and that they go to other schools, I guess, paramus, that offer things during the summer, that if there were enough of those kids taking a particular class, it might be nice to offer them something close, I do, I see, and I hear Stephanie's argument, they want to get away from Riverdale, but I, I hear a lot of stuff from kids who want to stay here, and they like this area, they think it's, it's a nice school, and they enjoy it. And it's closer to where they live, in the community, so anyway, we, we need to find out.
I, I agree, I think you gotta take the pulse, but I think what Paul said is too, you know what, and this is, again, one person's opinion, not speaking for the board, but being able to take a course and pass it, you know what, I bet you I could take any course you got there too, and I could figure out how I can pass the course, but am I going to really learn the material, that's in a short period of time. I'd be one of, I could, if I haven't been in pre-calculus, or calculus in many years, but you know what? Given the right things, and also the right smart, so I could pass the test, so I'm just, the kids are good test takers, and good, you know, like that, just to get through that, but the, our thing should, our, I think our, our mission is, as we said, is for that deeper learning, for them to really know what they're learning, as opposed to just, they pass the test.
Patrick, what do you think about summer school?
He, he doesn't.
Qualist, no, the qual, I mean, the, the, the learning experiment is not as good, obviously, as regular, but.
It's not, I'm, I, I think most of it is used for, uh, credit recovery. Credit recovery is a, is a different animal than enrichment. I think the enrichment programs that have taken place at the elementary schools are, um, more childcare than they are, whether or not there's anything that's going to come of, of, uh, value out of it, and, you know, I mean, off the top of my head, I, I don't see, uh, I don't see a large pool of, of students, I may be wrong, but I don't see a large pool of students that would make it even economically viable for us inside Riverdale to do it, which is why some of the other districts are doing it, because, and why it's, it's viable to them, is because since, since all the little districts aren't doing it, there's enough for one district to, to gain on it, um, so I, I'd have to think about it, see what kind of value would come of it.
Go ahead and finish.
Hi.
Hi.
So, I'd like to put my input, um, this might not be applicable for some people, because, I mean, I, from my personal experience, I didn't want to take a class during the summer, because I was caught up with everything. Obviously, there will be people who want to catch up with courses, or take courses over the summer, and for them, like, it might be cool if you could somehow give resources for people to, you know, hook up with that. But for me personally, I didn't want to take a course, and the only, what I did during my junior summer was I got an internship at the American Museum of Natural History, and the only reason why that happened was Mr. O'Toole, my history teacher, AP US History, just said to a couple of kids, hey, would you guys be interested in doing this, and there was like, no such thing as like, an application, it's only supposed to be reserved for, you know, like, New York City students, but he encouraged us to go and apply, and we emailed the woman, and she wouldn't email us back, we kept emailing. Finally, we got it, and we all got set up, and it was amazing, we got to take the bus into the city, I gained independence from the activity, even though it was menial work, it was really cool, and I, I liked it because I, I got a break from school, because school is tough. And I got to, like, do my own thing, figure out how to get there, and interact with people, and it was a really cool experience, so my suggestion would be to find some way, this is very, going to be very vague, but find some way to connect kids with those opportunities, because honestly, like, if Mr. O'Toole hadn't said anything, I would have spent my summer working swim club, which is cool. But I've done it for three years already, and it's not exactly, you know, stimulating to be sitting in a chair, watching people swim.
And, yeah, and I think that the kids that take classes during the summer, like, I know that some kids, I don't know, I don't know what it's called, there's like, this special, it's like a camp, but it's not, but they go.
T C something Y, something Y, C T Y.
And they go to that, and they take those science, yeah, they take those classes, because like, that's an experience. And I don't think going to Ms. J's room during the summer would be an experience, and you know, if they have to catch up on their math, they, most of the kids that would take the initiative to take a math course during the summer, already have tutors during the summer, and I know, like, kids that take AP classes have summer work to do, and like, they're not going to sign up for another class.
I just, I think it would be, I, I think it's a good idea, because like, it's, you know, addressing what students need to do during the summer, you can't just sit there, like, if you, I think kids, I mean, kids, I'm a kid, um, like, we, we generally, we generally think of summer as like, no school, but like, junior year, it got to the point where I was like, I, I really don't want to just like, you know, spend my summer like, relaxing, yes, I want to relax, I wanted to relax, trust me, but I got the time to do that, and do the internship, so it'd be really cool if you found a way to connect students with that, I, I don't know how, how you would find those.
You should create some sort of experience, so that you're kind of learning.
I don't know so much as create, but, but find internships, not, not find them for them, but give them a list where they can do their own thing, and connect with it, but I mean, right, I feel like I was lost, without Mr. O'Toole suggesting it.
Can I, can I just ask a question, is there a way to, to survey the entire student body, because
Survey Monkey.
No way do I want this to supplement the summer pre-college experiences, I do know a lot of high schools will give out of this, but you can go online, I can tell you some sites, like, hundreds of places all across the country where you can go for that. But sometimes there is a need, and there might be a certain pocket of kids looking for this, a certain pocket of kids looking for enrichment, maybe, uh, to do some research, whatever, but I just was wondering, you know, originally I was thinking, survey the community and the parents, but maybe really what we should be doing is surveying the students, so other than Survey Monkey.
Because the, because the people who would be interested in it would reply, and like, I mean, you could send out like, a Survey Monkey to everyone in like, the school, and you could say, this is like, about like, summer programs, and the people who are interested will actually take the survey, which is good, you could say.
Patrick, can, I know the school does this, so I think it would be easy to ask Lorraine to do that, uh, to find the options for students to take things that you're mentioning, uh, that they do, so that we could at least have an idea
They do.
Of, of, I know they do, I'm just.
I mean, I think, you know.
A little more factual, so that we might look at.
Is unique, and I think that's partly.
That I didn't hear of anything?
No, no, that, um, the, the particular experience you had.
Oh, they, no, no, no.
Because there's, there's a bunch of those that I'm sure our students go.
Part of it's.
It was very.
Go to Georgetown and do a political thing, it's all the boys state, girls state types of things, and I, I think those are opportunities that I think the board would like to be able to look at, that's it.
I don't think it's that unique, because back in the dark ages, I, as a junior in high school, went to Hayden Planetarium over the summer, which is right next door, and they have programs for high school students for free. I don't know if they're open for New Jersey residents, but that was for New York.
What I, what I meant is, it's, Mr., she had a connection with a teacher who had a particular piece of knowledge that she shared, and that's the unique piece, which happens not infrequently, that there is, uh, you know, a particular connection. I, I know that there are students who are in, she's been referred to tonight as Mrs. J, in, in her, you know, sphere, who've been involved in other things as well, because of, um, Mrs. Jakobis' particular area of expertise. That's what I meant by unique, not, not going to the Met, I'm sorry, the Museum of Natural History. The connection.
Excuse me, maybe, maybe what I was saying is, if these people have unique information, if there was maybe some central repository, they, they deal with certain students, I guess, and if they become aware of something for the summer, maybe that may interest somebody who's not their student, maybe if there was some central place, you know, a bulletin board or something, saying things to do during the summer.
Besides, drive your parents crazy.
Uh, I would say, that's, that's a good aspect of my point of view.
We actually get emails, like, all the time about internship, like, we, we get those, it's just that, like, that one happened to be really awesome, and Mr. O'Toole said it to the people that knew would be interested, like, he, he asked me, but I, I couldn't get into the city every day, and I knew it wasn't possible, but like, you know, he, he asked the students that he knew would benefit the most from it. I mean, there are ones where everyone could benefit, and everyone could apply, but that one, specific one, was tailored for some people.
So, to sum this up, can we say there's some consensus to at least investigating if there's a pulse of interest out there? Whether it be in the next survey that we do next September, to either parents or students, or whatever, is there some idea that we want to maybe bring it up during the town hall meeting, see if people there respond, like, is there some interest in getting this pulse, to see if there would be interest from either students or parents, or whatever?
I think the consensus is, we can't have a conversation until we figure out if there's interest, so, yeah, the consensus is, is let's figure out if there's interest before we even have a conversation.
There's also ask Patrick, or I have asked Patrick for all the information that the school's already doing, so that we know what's already going on. Or reinvent the whole wheel, if we have a whole bunch of things.
What's going on at Riverdale, you were asking for, okay, so, so we do want.
Opportunities for students over the summer.
So, we do want some more feedback, then, so we want to, we're in consensus, I guess, am I clear on this, are we consensus aboard? We do want to just figure out if there's interest or not.
We'd like to see if there's more interest.
Okay, all right, and what committee would that be, that committee, how, how would that work, Joe?
Don't limit us.
No, no, I'm not, I put on the, I'm, I don't care where we put it.
If you were a board.
Okay, great.
Any old business, or other items? Wow, any new business?
Penny monkey bit, no.
Uh-oh.
So, I just took off a bridge of Survey Monkey, I was gonna, I was trying to come up with something on that monkey thing. Public comments, from anybody?
Just two things, uh, this Saturday.
Oh, if you don't mind, just identify yourself, if you don't want to, if you could come to the microphone, if not, just identify yourself. Okay.
Well, this Saturday is actually.
Who are you?
Oh, could you, when you actually identify, could you just let us know who you are?
Oh, my name's Thomas Student of Riverdale.
Yep, thank you.
For, uh, Ironback, actually, for, uh, Boys Scouts of Tru-My-84 River Edge, so but this Saturday, yeah, two of my friends, uh, they're having an evil project, one Eric Diamond, he's doing a, um, he's doing a pathway for the Lutheran church nearby, so, so maybe you can like, spread the word about it, so you can get some help for it, uh, some donations, and also, another friend of mine, Andrew Yen, uh, he's doing a donation for, uh, I think he's helping the one armory nearby, I'm not that sure which one, but it's going to be donating some stuff to them, so some donations will be great from the school, or from, uh, we'll be giving out flyers, uh, over, during Saturday, the weekend, we're giving out flyers on like, some items that we would like, and, yeah, and that.
Where, where will you be giving out the flyers?
Uh, we'll be giving out the flyers at the home, actually, like, uh, Tru-My-84 and all the other, uh, troops, they do a food drive, and we usually leave a bag and a flyer, that's, we're going to do that this year too, we're just going to leave a flyer, leaving, uh, some information about it, Andrew Yen has all the flyers, he's going to distribute them to some scouts, to put them on, on, in, in the houses doors, door doors, to keep them up, so, like, when you open the door, about fifteen minutes, you'll see, so.
Great.
Spread the word about that, this Saturday, you'll, you'll see a flyer near your door, or you can come help down at the Lutheran church, uh, just down the street, uh, fit that, and then we'll be making a, a cement pathway, and a bench, and, and decoration, and making it decorated.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, just encourage people to watch RD TV then, because the meeting is back on Thursday nights, right? And this way, the, you'll, the, your public service announcement right there, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, before we adjourn, I'm just going to let everybody know, we will be going into executive, but, uh, when we come back out of executive, which is but, uh, when we come back out of executive, which is by, by statute, we won't be voting on anything, but we will be coming back into a regular meeting just to close that down,